All right, you're good.
I'd like to call the mayor's elected meeting to order, April 3rd, 2017. Item two, can you please join me? Pledge of allegiance.
Aye, pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is public comment. We have someone waiting to speak first because he has some youngsters waiting for him.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Board of Selectmen. I'm John Ryan. I'm assistant scoutmaster of Troop 21 here in Putnam. And we are chartered to St. Mary Church of the Visitation. Troop 21 Boy Scouts of America, chartered to St. Mary Church of the Visitation here in Putnam, is proud to announce the final tolls for the March food drive here in Putnam and the Park Road area. We did get some late donations that hadn't been reported in the media. We worked with Cargill Council 64, Knights of Columbus, Putnam Supermarket, and the Putnam Mayor's Office. Troop 21 scouts collected a total of $2,601 in cash and 2,523 pounds of nonperishable food. That was all weighed, by the way. That is not an estimate. Late collections brought in almost 200 pounds of food after our public collection event held at the Knights of Columbus Hall on Providence Street on Saturday, March 18th. There was also a much appreciated donation of $300 to Project Northeast from Daughters of Isabella St. Mary Circle 543 of Putnam. These are the final numbers. The money was given to Project Northeast while the food was given to Daily Bread. These are both nonprofit, non-denominational food pantries here in Putnam. Now, Troop 21 is here tonight to particularly thank Putnam Mayor Tony Fauserano and Executive Assistant Denise Royro and all of the town employees who so generously donated over 200 pounds of nonperishable food to this effort. Mrs. Royro and Mayor Fauserano provided the effort and the leadership needed to make this town hall collection a big success. And Tony, I think we filled up the back of your car.
Yes, we did.
I believe we did, yes. And by the way, we are beginning our new schedule very soon. This is our old schedule. We do need new kits. We're, we, we do our own programming. The kids do their own programs, their own work. They do their own cooking, their own planning. The adults are there to supervise and make sure everybody is safe. And we take care of transportation. We just finished winter camping. We just finished our big food drive for the year. This coming month, we're going shotgun shooting. Next month, we're going fly fishing. Then we've got scout camp coming up for a week in July. And then back to it again with another fishing trip, et cetera, et cetera. So if you know of any young people here in Putnam who would like to join us, we did, we're gonna leave these brochures for everybody. And as I said, we're just, tonight, we're gonna plan the new schedule for the upcoming year. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, sir.
Would any other citizens like to make a comment or ask a question? Yes, Mr. Lucio.
Dean Lucia, 145 Woodstock Avenue. A couple things. I was wondering how Attorney Seanos was doing with 137, 139 Woodstock Avenue? If you've heard anything.
No, I haven't.
Okay. Could you tell me if the violations, the fines for the violations have been enforced?
I'm pretty sure he did issue a letter and on the fines. If they've been paid, I'm not sure.
All right, 'cause right now, from what I figure, it's 230 days at $25 a day. It's about $5,750.
We sure could use that during budget time.
And according to the state, Attorney Seanos is familiar with it, there's all kinds of zoning regulations that this person's violating. The third floor is inhabited now. There's someone living on the third floor.
Okay. I will send the building officially tomorrow morning.
I notified him this afternoon. I went after, yeah, I went after, got out of school and let him know. I didn't know how familiar he was with it. I said, "I'm pretty sure there was a cease and desist order on the third floor."
Yes, there was.
I'm not absolutely sure. But someone's been in there for about a week, week and a half.
Okay. Unless he's aware of that.
Right, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, have you, have you spoken with Chad Sesums about it?
Yeah, four o'clock today. I had mentioned it. You know, but how familiar, I asked him. He said, "Well, Attorney Seanos is booked on it." I said, "Well, he was on it prior to." But I says, "I'm sure Bill has no idea this is going on."
Let me tell you, Chad is a good guy.
Yeah, oh, I agree 100%. I met him. You know, I have no problem with him. Anything I had asked him, he'd always answer my questions. And he said he would look into it.
He will. Okay, Dan. And Oshir, he'll get back or I'll get back to you, one or the other?
All right, thank you.
Tony, real quick.
Yes?
Do we have a hearing officer yet?
I contacted two people. David Vitale has volunteered as well as Peter Place. So we have two people who, Vitale's in the heat flipping houses and stuff like that. And Peter Place, the former mayor, has got a pretty good handle on things. So those two guys are gonna get together with Chad and set up this hearing office, whatever that position's gonna be.
And there's still, there's still a violation with the fence. And that's been...
How many days?
About 230 days.
Just make sure you give that stuff to Chad tomorrow. You see him or call him, I'll tell him as well. So I gotta get Vitale. And there were two heads of expectation there. You know Dave and you know Peter. Very calm. One guy's very excitable. So this would make a nice combination. Okay. Approval of minutes, March 20, 2017. Need a motion.
So moved.
Motion made, second. Are there any additions or corrections? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, petitions and communications. We have a letter dated March 17th from Wheelgrader regarding the Recycle Metal Recovery Demonstration Project Status Report Number Nine. You all received that? Anybody have a question on that? Okay, moving on. The report is standing committee, General Government Committee. You have any, Alma?
Further down, we're gonna go into executive session. I can't talk, to talk about the updated contract and then we'll come out and present it as long as everything is okay with that. And other than that, as far as meeting times, maybe, maybe in June? And depending on Mary. I know she's in the middle of budgets and everything else. So we'll try to schedule something in June if she's ready for it.
Perfect. I know this is not a reporting month. But only want to say anything about the charter revision?
We're gonna have a meeting on the 20, is it 26?
26. That's the Board of Selectmen will have a public hearing. Okay, we waited for, I don't wanna come home for that. Special service, although it's not a reporting month. Roy, you wanna give anything on that?
They don't meet till next week.
Okay, that's fine. Facility Study Group, Mary and I just met with, I guess, an offshoot of that, working on the armory. Just nothing major, just going over a few things.
There was a meeting. Did you ever know? Yeah, that's right, I remember.
Yeah, we had a meeting last week.
You already do it reporting that or you don't have to if you don't want to?
Really, nothing happened. We're dealing with the new plan and the new engineers.
I had a question about that, too.
Okay.
When we started this way back, Facilities Committee had nothing to do with the fields. They had a field committee that was gonna handle designing the fields. In the meantime, like Alan kinda took that over. And he moved it toward your committee, which the other committee, there's myself, Willie, two more guys in the rec commission, some people from softball, softball, Little League. So we gotta find out who's controlling designing that field, whether it's the people you wanted to or you want the facilities group to do.
I think that's still coming under your purview as a recreation.
Well, that's what I thought, too. But Alan brought it up the other night and I heard there was a big, a lot of yelling going on. So, you know, we gotta kinda cool that down so we know where we're at.
I know, you're on the, you're on that Facilities Committee, Mr. Story.
Unfortunately, I am on the committee and we were not aware that they were dealing with J and D on the ball fields and relocation, elimination of fields, so on and so forth. And for some unknown reason beyond us, they reversed the discharge and went to Saban Street underneath 18 cars. And from the very beginning of our committee, it was agreed that we should not be using Saban Street as our main entry P bus. That it was intended always to go over the bridge back towards the schools. That was part of my conversation. But for some reason, J and D didn't know anything about that part.
Okay. As far as the fields go on, I think it was clear tonight, Mary, that Willie's gonna be in charge of the reparation of the field. What's going on first?
Willie took over. And without Willie taking over, it would've been nowhere.
Right.
As of today. At least he's moved to the state. He's got them sending us letters and telling us what we're gonna do. So we're moving forward. Which has still been two and a half years behind like we were before. So at least that's moving forward. I think it's just the rec commission because it is gonna be their fields. The new plan, I only looked at it one meeting for a little while. They did take one Little League field away.
Because they needed 50 feet on each side of the river as a buffer. Consequently, one Little League field had been taken out.
So...
And they took a soccer field away.
Well, that one big field is bigger than all the other ones. If you added them all up, I think the big field except by itself is bigger than all the soccer fields plus the practice football field. 'Cause that's a big piece of land.
The original, down the corner. Three small soccer fields and one big one.
Yeah.
Plus a full football field. This new plan has one less small soccer field.
Yeah. I don't know, I haven't...
And one less Little League field.
Yeah.
So it's two fields down.
Yeah.
I don't know what the state of football is with the Putnam High School. Bill Hogg just gave us a report. Twelve boys play football for Putnam High this year.
Was it that many?
Twelve. That's the number he gave. Who knows?
So what I understand, though, this football field is mostly for WPTP.
I don't know, Doug, where we're...
Oh, the practice football field? Could be anybody. High school could use it to practice.
Because right now, they're practicing...
Up there, yeah.
Up there.
Yeah.
When that, if that goes away...
They need to place the...
Right around here.
Yes, I'm sure the Fields Committee will take a closer look at that, I'm hoping.
I'm sorry.
I said, "I'm sure the Fields Committee will probably take a closer look at that." I don't know if they're even neat on that.
Okay, Town Administrator's report. Mary, you all received Mary's report. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I have a question on the library fiber project. Is the, is the potential grant, would that pay for the whole project?
Potentially, it could pay for the entire project to install fiber. So we're working with the state. They are aware of kind of the circumstances that we're in right now, that we may be looking to change locations. So they're willing to work with us. It's gonna be dependent on how much money is left in the pool in a year, year and a half, depending on when we have cost estimates of what it would be for if we, if we are going to the different, to the new location. So the way it's written right now, it would cover the full cost to get fiber installed to the current library. That cost will get revised if it's...
Correct.
To a new facility.
Understood.
And then we would have to look at that. So there is potential.
And then, this isn't a question, it's just a comment. I am really impressed with your reports.
Thank you.
Seeing that you are on the interview committee, you know we picked you. Okay.
You did a good job.
I have a question.
Yes!
Especially since we have Jerry here.
The number one question that I get, and I'm sure the others selectmen get it too, is what roads are gonna be repaved completely?
So this spring.
I read this thing about walnut, but...
Yeah, so this spring, the first one that we're looking at is walnut. So we'll be going out for RFP on walnut to do the sidewalk scan. The repaving on Walnut Street first.
So we're talking grind it right down?
No, that one we're just gonna do overlay on, right?
No, yeah. We're gonna replace all the sidewalks.
Right.
Then we're gonna mill it.
Mill it.
And grind it.
Yeah.
And mill it.
Into a half, two inches, repave.
Right. And then we're gonna do, so that one will take roughly two, two and a half months, probably depending on how much time we're talking about the sidewalks. And then our next one will be South Main. So South Main will hopefully be done late summer into fall. We'll get sidewalks and that one...
It has to be wiped out.
That one's gotta be completely wiped out and redone.
We have to reduce the, the height of the roadway because if we don't do that, the sidewalks are gonna be up on people's porches.
Yeah.
Down, not a roadway there's supposed to be. So that, that's gonna be, we're gonna remove, break in asphalt, remove some of the gravel. And hopefully, I have a meeting on Wednesday morning at nine o'clock and I should have some draft set of specifications for both of those projects on Friday morning. And are you gonna tell them about the grant money for Woodstock Avenue and Church Street?
Yeah, that's my next piece.
It's coming up on number 11.
All right, what, what about the state road?
That's not our property.
That's the state.
Which state?
State permitting agency, South Main Street.
Grove Street into South Main Street, whatever you wanna call it, near Rex Billiards or Johnny Brown's.
Isn't, isn't South Main Street still Route 12?
Yes, that portion, that intersection.
But are we doing it?
No. Oh. It's not our money. Well, wait a minute, let me, let me finish. The paving job that you had seen over the winter, which are not correct, but that's okay, are not permanent pavement. Okay, it's not what the, the contracts call for. Either Yankee Gas, Town of Putnam, on state roads or on municipal roads is not permanent pavement. So both Yankee Gas and BMW Landscaping and Paving, okay, are coming back to permanent pavement, paving on Mechanic Street, Route 12. That's a water project. South Main Street, I mean, excuse me, School Street. Some of it's water, some of it's gas. That has to be redone. South Main Street in front of a blood draw, taking the hospital blood draw. That's a, that's a 50-50 deal, but that has to, that's gonna be ground and repaved. And I believe it's half of the, half of the roadway from gutter line to center line. Don't quote me on that width, but I'm pretty sure. And BMW, they shouldn't have had to come back, but is going to do something with Walnut Street. And so isn't the gas company before we go in there because we, you know, I don't know how many people have been up there. But hopefully, you still have your teeth and your shocks and whatever else you have in your car. And I, I on purpose went up there today. I've got a Camaro, as most people know. And I had to go at like five miles an hour, five, 10 miles an hour or else. I was gonna bottom out.
South Main is like that, too.
Yeah, but South Main was a war zone before. I mean, I'm not trying to make excuses, but Walnut Street was, Walnut Street was, had some issues, but nothing, nothing happened. That's ridiculous.
Well, Jerry, has the gas company and the water company taken ownership of that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, all right, okay.
Absolutely. They can't, they can't get out of that because we have performance bonds.
Okay, very good.
So if they don't fix it, then we'll fix it and we'll hit their performance bond.
Right.
So they need to come back and make it rightable, I guess is the word. And then we'll go in.
Okay.
And we'll do our thing.
What is our, what is our, our, our strategy for getting the word out to the townspeople? When the, when the, when the shovels and the grinders start hitting the pavement, warning people, "Hey, stay away from this road. It will be detoured around Putnam."
What I normally do when we reconstruct a road is we send, we give a letter to each household.
Yeah.
Right in the front door.
Yeah.
And we're gonna do it, we're gonna start May 15th. You have to understand, you have to stay off the streets. You might not be able to get in your driveway. We have a little letter. It's, it's not very big, it's maybe two paragraphs. And we put that up to the residents. We'll put a, you know...
What's the chronology for that? Is that out two months before it's, it's...
Well, we have to find out when we're gonna, we've gotta put the thing up a bit. You people are gonna have to water bid. And we're gonna have to find out what the timeframe is for the contractor. Then we can go do it.
Okay.
It might be 30 days.
Well, what are you helping us out, getting the word out to the people that don't live on that?
Absolutely. We'll do, you know, we'll press release saying what's happened. Once, once you people have water bid, then we can go out and say, hey, you know, we have the contractor, we have, you know, Bosley Construction, he's gonna start June 15th, you know, whatever. Okay?
You had me at hello.
Okay, item 10, unfinished business, carbon falls, possible litigation, and Town Administration's contract will all go under a second decision. So move to number 11. Grant consideration updates. Mary, anything?
So I'm in the process of applying for a LoCIP grant. And that would be to do the sidewalks and the repaving of Woodstock Avenue and Church Street.
Right.
So my understanding is once the application is submitted, which hopefully, we can get that done in the next 30 days. There's some engineering that has to, mapping and stuff that has to happen, which NICOG is gonna be able to help us with. It takes about a year for, once it gets submitted, to find out whether or not, you know, we can get shovels to the ground. So timing wise, that works for our timing for that anyway of getting those two, because they weren't gonna be on until next year slated for that anyway. So that's what we're looking at for those. And also, we're looking at potential grant funding to potentially be able to redesign the intersection on Kennedy Drive where the YMCA and all of that is, NICOG had indicated that there may be grants, some grant funding that we could utilize in dealing with that intersection reconstruction and being able to put in something for traffic light potentially. So we were, that was part of our conversations with them.
Now, the reason why we're going for Woodstock Avenue and Church Street is you haven't seen the water project go up Church Street, Woodstock Avenue yet. That will happen this construction season. You already saw the gas main project go up portion of Woodstock Avenue. Not bad. It's not great, but it's not bad. But Woodstock Avenue's starting to fall apart a little bit, as most of you can see. Getting some real spalling and we've got small potholes, which eventually are gonna become big potholes.
Given another winter.
Yeah.
We have a resident here last, last meeting complaining about Woodstock Avenue.
It's hallowed shaking.
Yeah.
Hallowed shaking.
Right, right at the intersection near the high school.
Well, there's, there's a high school, yes, that's a, yes. That's where the water project went in and the gas project went in as well. So they will...
So we're trying to get a...
We gave him your whole phone or something.
24/7, you have to, it's in the phone book.
So we're trying to get a...
We gave him your cellphone. You told him where you sit if he yells.
On the new business, item 12. We invited Jerry Bosley here to give you a briefing on the manganese treatment plant that you received in your packet there. So as Jerry tells you what we're doing. It started out as a $2.9 million project. Now it's up to $5 million, or very close, thereabouts. So Jerry, you've got the floor.
You jumped. You jumped.
I jumped. What a miss.
A, B, C?
I'm ready for my chair.
I said I jumped, I jumped down to D because he's here.
No, it's okay, you can go ahead.
No, go ahead, Jerry. We watch out there.
Well, number one, Tony received a letter from Bill Sanos, our town attorney, that said that our bidding ordinance, and I don't, I think Mary's got all of that information. Our bidding ordinance, section 101, and I'm not gonna try to quote anymore, said that design build was allowable under our bidding ordinance if the Board of Selectmen approved the bid.
Well, they don't approve the bid. They approve the design criteria package and are given the, the costs. So the design criteria package and cost estimate needs to be reviewed and approved by the Board of Selectmen. That's in our bidding ordinance under 101-3.
And this is in reference to what?
Manganese.
Manganese treatment facility. It's gonna be put in at Park Road Wealth Field to take care of the iron and manganese coming out of our wealth field.
Didn't we discuss this a while back?
A long time ago.
We probably discussed it a long time ago. We're not sure. I, Tony, myself, or Bill Sanos are sure whether or not Doug put this past you people.
He did.
I think he did.
Two years ago.
It's entirely possible that he didn't.
It's entirely possible. But we don't wanna, we can't miss any steps here because the USDA will just go...
If you go and look, if you go and look at, at the minutes, it was in every one of his reports.
I understand that, but did you ever have a vote? Is what I'm saying. We didn't want Denise going back to 2000. This thing's been going on now since 2013.
Okay, all right. I, I thought we'd already voted on it.
We might have, Roy. Roy, you might have, okay. We don't know.
So this is just reformalizing that vote.
Really, they've already, they've already, this is not gonna... WPCA has already figured out a way how they are gonna pay for it.
Right, and that's correct. I don't know if they gave you a piece of paper, if that's all on...
Okay, so we're just gonna make sure it's right by vote now?
Right, we haven't actually signed the contract.
Okay.
For the design bill. So this is right pre-signing of the contract. This is you guys voting on...
We can't sign until you do this.
Right.
Understood.
So Mary, we need a motion here, don't we?
Yes, we need a motion to approve.
Turn it. Motion made, second to approve the manganese treatment design and...
Design bill.
Design bill, contract.
Okay, design bill, contract. Any more discussion since we've been talking about it since 2013? Seeing that all in favor? Anybody opposed? Other names, Stenshams? I have the sew wire. Okay, you're all set, Mr. Bosley.
And go find my chair.
Okay, let's go back up.
Thanks, Jerry.
12A. Consider the naming the canoe and kayak launch in Simonsy Park, the Douglas M. Cutler Canoe and Kayak Launch to Town.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, a second to bring that to a town meeting. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go.
Is that boat launch or kayak launch actually in Simonsy Park? Or is it down the river?
There's one in Simonsy now.
Yeah, so...
I know this wasn't in Simonsy now, but I thought the new one was...
This is right under the bridge, under the, through the heavy bridge.
Is that still considered in the park?
So it's not really in Simonsy Park?
It's not in Simonsy Park. It's not in Simonsy Park, no.
It's off that parking lot, right? Is that the one you talked about?
Yeah, I know what you're thinking, it's right, right? It's off the river trail, that is actually what it's off of.
Right.
Right, so river trail at the bridge, so.
And the river trail.
So we can clean up the verbiage of the.
Yeah, I don't know.
The name of it is still gonna be, is, is, doesn't have Simonsy Park in it, the name, it's just Douglas M. Cutler.
Right.
Canoe and kayak launch.
Off the River Park or River Trail?
Well, it's, that's, we're not, it was, that's not gonna be part of the official name.
It's gotta go to a town meeting, just name, that's the town, it's like.
I just didn't know if legally that was.
And sidebar to that.
By the time, by the time that town meeting occurs, why don't we get a little bit more specific on where it is?
It is at the end of the river trail. Exactly at the end of the river trail.
At the bridge, right?
Right.
And that's fine, let's just put that instead of Simonsy Park, so people know where we're talking.
That's on your motion?
She'll have to amend your motion.
I'll amend my motion to.
To make sure that we have it at the end of the river trail.
At the end of the river trail. As sidebar to that, as part of the discussion, Willie Buschka and I talked to Wheeler Brader and they were gonna pay the seventeen hundred dollars for the kiosk that's gonna be there.
Very nice.
So that's, that's taken care of, there's no town money involved in that. And Wheeler Brader's been doing that for all the last Green Valley kiosses are voted a place, so this is the last one, I hope. So with that said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have the sew wire. Now we have this, when this goes to a town meeting and there's, Mary wants to do it when we have the.
Uh, Bill St. Osgood recommended just putting it as part of the overall town meeting in, in May as opposed to calling a special one for your May first, um, board of selectmen meeting, that's the two options, you can either do it, um, in conjunction with your May first, um, board of selectmen meeting or we add it on to the annual town meeting, um, the dedication and, um, all of that, Willie's scheduling for June, so he'd like to get it done prior to then. So it's just a matter of what night you wanna deal with it on.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion, no, May tenth, is the town.
May tenth.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second to put this on the agenda of the town meeting for May tenth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I have it, thank you very much. I'm to be set and approve the authorization resolution between the town department, State Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of the Emergency Management and Homeland Security. What does that mean, Mary?
So this is, um, basically, we have an agreement with, um, the emergency management with the state and it's just, you know, they have our contact information and, um, it's a, it's an agreement back and forth in, in sharing of information.
Okay, there's.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I have the sew wire to see. Consider and approve declaring April as Fair Housing Month.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
As opposed to being unfair?
I guess. All those in favor of declaring April Fair Housing, same as everybody saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I have it. E, consider for approval requisition Girl Scout troop six four oh oh seven to use Kennedy Drive parking lot across from the public restroom on April twenty ninth, two thousand seventeen for a National Arbor Day celebration.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, one question, is this gonna upset parking in that lot there?
That's the, that's the commuter lot.
Am I at the wrong spot here?
Right?
Yeah.
Am I correct where it is?
Yeah, the commuter lot.
It's the lot across from.
Oh, okay, all right.
The one on, going down Kennedy Drive on the right hand side after Palm Tree.
Small little.
So we're not losing any parking?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I have it. F, consider approval Democrat Kathy Gerton of eighty-seven Saban Street to the Putnam Arts Council.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I have it. Consider approve Republican Laura Moorhead of one hundred one Aldridge Road to the Putnam Arts Council.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Approving the bills on.
Makes a motion to be approved, bills. Second.
You almost didn't get through that one.
Are there any outstanding bills, any questionable bills? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all, all the business that often come before this board?
Uh, I got, while Jerry's here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna toss this out there. Uh, Joe Tatro came up to me a couple of weeks ago.
Joey?
Yeah, Joe. And, and he said, hey, going Saban Street, if you were, if you were going past King, right, and you return it on to Saban Street it's like a hunk of guardrail that's either been torn away or there was an accident there.
Guardrail has to be replaced.
All right, is that on the docket sometimes?
We're in the process right now of measuring guardrail replacement, Saban Street there, the opposite end towards Battoon Road. The guardrail over here on Church Street, whether or not we're gonna replace that one before we do the roadway, I'm not sure. I've gotta check with the guardrail people.
Yeah, I'm not so, I'm not so concerned about it in, in the summer months, but that's just something bad waiting to happen.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Jerry.
Probably by July.
Got it.
That's town road monies that we use for that.
Very good.
Anything else? Okay, uh, public comment? Oh, now, I don't have any, I don't have any announcements, the only announcement I wanna make is I was kind of upset, I went to the board of finance meeting and uh, a board of financier mentioned forensic audit and I, I think that's kind of way out there. Our regular audit took six hundred hours at a cost of about forty thousand dollars. If you do a forensic audit, multiply those numbers by four and that's the lowest price I got, so think about that. Okay, that's the only comment I have, public comment, anybody else? Mr. Sennay?
I mean, Mr. Perrin. Wow.
He is getting old. Very simply, any more progress or any comments about the house fire we had on Whipple Street in that situation, being that there's no owners?
I talked to Bill and, and Bill said it'll have to go, either we have to put it on the market, sell it, or to go for the tax sale.
We would as the town? We have to be able to get rid of it.
Yeah.[1741.14]